Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I call to order this February 3 meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, you may have seen that we've had a request to add an additional item to the agenda tonight, and according to our rules of procedure, I would need a motion to allow that item to be added, this item G3.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Terry Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding this item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Thank you. We'll add that. I guess you see right now, we're doing our votes tonight by voice vote, so.
Correct.
Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. And would you join the city council with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Watkins. Thank you for being with us. And the fire marshal tonight is Bradley Watson. Thank you for being with us as well, Bradley. I'd like to recognize the city manager, Pat Payton, for his bi-monthly update.
Thank you. Mayor, there's just a couple of things to go over with you tonight. One is, first, just in recognition of all the time that you've been spending with staff over the last two weeks, I want to say thank you to council for the efforts on our strategic planning workshops that we held two days this week, Wednesday, or last week, Wednesday and Thursday. And as folks probably don't know, we were busy from first thing in the morning until well in the evening on Wednesday and half a day on Thursday. So I think you earned your money last week by far. In addition to that, we had a tour. We've done some other work, essentials of new government class training. So there's been a lot of time and effort spent by council, helping us get ready to prepare for this next four-year term that you're in and for the upcoming budget. So we'll be coming back to the council as we begin budget preparation and adoption with some information that we gathered from these sessions, particularly the strategic planning discussions, for you to take some additional action on. And one item that is from the sessions, the code of conduct, is on your agenda for tonight to adopt. That, along with the civility pledge that you're also in the process of moving forward with, will provide a great framework to guide the council in conducting your city business in an objective and a thoughtful manner. So we thank you for your time you spent doing that. We certainly appreciate it, and the community is going to bear lots of positives from that. Want to also let you know that the arts and the public, the arts, culture, and entertainment memorial, Walk of Fame nominations are open until Friday, February 28. The nominees must have made a significant contribution to the arts and entertainment industry, be deceased, lived in Winston-Salem for at least five years, and have made civic-minded contributions to the city. For more information or to nominate someone, you can go to the cityofwinstonSalem.org website under Walk of Fame. Again, that's for the end of this month, February 28. Parks and Recreation is going to be hosting several Black History events this month that I want to remind you of. The Sedg Garden community will host Black History Virtual Trivia on February 5 and February 13, and on February 20 at the Minnie Lee Davis Harris Community Center, they'll be hosting Black History trivia for teens at 4:00 p.m. The Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center will host Boston Thurman Community Connecting to Our Past experiences during the full month of February, and the William R. Anderson Jr. Community Center will host daily Black History Month classes. All of this additional information can be found on the website or by looking at the WePlay registry from Parks and Recreation. The city is also hosting the annual Community Roots Day event on Saturday, February 22 at 9:00 a.m. Volunteers will plant over 100 trees in various parks. Again, in that one, you can email kwsb@cityofwinstonSalem.org for more information. And then finally, in events, Neighborhood Services is partnering with Piedmont Triad Regional Council to host the Housing Summit on February 27 at the Benton Convention Center. The summit will feature a variety of speakers representing stakeholders from around the region, including keynote speaker Patrick Bowen, who's president of Bowen National Research, who will present the Carolina Core Housing Needs Assessment Study. Registration is required and is available on the PTRC website. And then, it's on my list, and so I don't think I'm going to steal Ben's thunder, let him do this later, but there was many, many departments that were involved, led by Assistant City Manager Ralph, on the cookout clash that happened this past weekend. I know many of you were there, or if you're not there, you saw the folks in town. I think we had, there were sell-out crowds on Saturday and Sunday, and from my perspective, I didn't get any calls of any real concerns of anything going on over there. I was there both days, and getting in and out was not a problem. There were a lot of people. They were very cooperative, well-behaved. We think we made a lot of money on concessions. We think NASCAR put on a really a great event, the new lights that were there, the racing was very good. So I think that's going to be a great feather in the cap for the city. And as the mayor said, Winston-Salem was mentioned on national TV so many times, we can't count how much that would cost if we were trying to put those ads out there ourselves. And actually, I'm going to let Ben just give a bit of thanks to all the departments that actually participated in that.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of council. I would like to take a moment and share with you the total team effort that the city provided to support this event. It was amazing that NASCAR made this announcement in August, and it was an all-out sprint to this past weekend, and we couldn't have done it without all the departments that were involved. So I'm just going to run down the list real quick. Fairgrounds, the police department, property and facilities management, the city attorney's office, information systems department, just a real quick aside on that one, and all that they've been doing to get us recovered. At one point, I had to ask them, I said, "Well, I need you to come and help make sure the fiber is working in the stadium," and I almost felt embarrassed to ask them about that, but they did. They did. They got it ready. Our Department of Transportation, Planning and Development Services, Fire Department, Emergency Management, Sustainability, Sanitation, Utilities, Marketing and Communications, Finance, Real Estate, City Link, and Business Inclusion and Advancement. So almost every facet of city government was involved in supporting this event and making it happen. So I just thank them for what they've done, because it was a fabulous weekend. And as the city manager said, I mean, I did not receive any complaints either. I think that I talked to a NASCAR official this morning, and they said it was a home run. So I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll stand ready for any questions. I will add, Ben played a pretty big role in getting that thing off the ground and making sure it happened. So thank you for his effort as well.
Thank you, everybody, as well. Ben, thank you specifically for you led the effort. He was the cheerleader and the stirring the pot guy, so you made it all happen. So appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, again, thank you, and thank you to all of the staff. Will there be, or do we know, we won't know yet, but will we know the economic impact to the city at some later date?
That's a great question, Mayor Pro Tim, and I had a discussion this morning about it. NASCAR will be able to provide me with some information here in the near future. They're still compiling information. They shared with me that they'll probably get the overnight rating from the television broadcast, which I think will be interesting. In my discussion with them, I mentioned, were they going to be doing an economic impact study or anything like that? And first of all, what they informed me was, those are typically very expensive to do, sometimes often six figures, to have a thorough economic impact study done. So I'm not sure that they're going to do one. I may look into it on the city side, not necessarily looking to pay six figures for an economic impact study, but if we have local resources, our universities that might be able to do something, I might look into that. But so they're going to provide me some information, but as far as a dollar amount, I think it's very early to estimate what this past weekend could have.
But we will, normally, we get information from the tourism board as well as to whether our hotels provided X amount of rooms during that weekend, something like that, because that's money that we'll see in the occupancy tax, and every little bit helps. So like you said, any of our resources that we previously get that information from, whether it's them or the chamber or the restaurant people, I think it would be very interesting just to get a rough estimate, once you get with the organizations and groups to see if there was, which it had to be, because all of the cars that people were calling me about, the only concern that I got, text messages and emails, and that was the shuttle service. They loved it, but they felt like, again, because this thing is new, we'd never done anything of this size, and because of the weather, I think the people were patient, but they just couldn't understand why it took so long for people to get on, to be able to get shuttles back and forth to the stadium and back. That's all I have.
Councilmember Cipio and Councilmember Clark.
Yes, I want to say to Mr. Ralph, you did a phenomenal job. I know it's a team effort, but I know it was your leadership, and I can say Winston-Salem has phenomenal people running this city, and you showed that. It was a class act all the way, as you can see from the scarves that they gave us at the gate, not just rinky-dink scarves, but really nice scarves, great colors. The people were orderly. The setup was just great. The traffic was great. The people who lived in Morningside didn't even see that. They were being inundated because of how everything was so well organized with the parking. So it was great. So I thank you, hats off to you, Ben, because I know you're a quiet person who rarely raises his voice, but definitely, it was a class act. And it just goes to show you, that's what Winston-Salem has always been about, when we have great employers and great partners, always have put on big shows in a phenomenal way. And I'm happy that many people now who are here are seeing just the quality of this city. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Not to blabber the point, but I feel compelled to say it was absolutely phenomenal. I was expecting a lot more glitches, because the first time it's ever been done in Winston-Salem, and everything had to be created within a matter of a few months. But the stadium was absolutely packed, standing room only. I don't know what the capacity of the stadium is, but even the bowl was full, and then behind it was full. We got in and out without any trouble. Anyway, just everything was first rate. They had the field decorated with logos and things, you know. The new lighting system was phenomenal, and I hope it becomes a tradition with NASCAR and Winston-Salem. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Very good job. Any questions to Mr. Payton, by the way? Thank you, Mr. Payton. We'll move to the agenda tonight. It's comprised of two parts. As you know, this consent agenda and the general agenda, and it's always the practice of our council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been approved unanimously by committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. We won't discuss items individually on this agenda unless a council member so requests, at which time we will remove it from the agenda and consider it individually. Items not removed will be enacted as one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on our YouTube page, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 and again tomorrow night at 9:00 p.m. Of course, you can always get copies of our agendas, as well as videos of previous meetings, by just simply going to our website and click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items on consent you would like to pull?
Go for approval.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember Clark to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and that's unanimous. Thank you. We'll now run to, we'll go to, we'll go to the general agenda. We have three items on there, and the first item is a report of the property revaluation presentation by our tax supervisor, John Burgess. John, thank you for being with us tonight.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tim, and council. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Wanted to spend a few minutes with you talking about the 2025 reappraisal, and if I'm lucky, when you go home tonight, you'll have those notices in your mailbox. Thank you. My apologies. Before we do talk a little bit about reappraisals specifically, I wanted to back up just a second and talk about why we do reappraisals. Certainly, they are required statutorily. In North Carolina, every county must conduct a county-wide reappraisal at least once every eight years. Forsyth County has done reappraisals every four years since the mid-1980s. In property tax, there are four different types of property that we tax. Three of those are assessed every year at 100% of fair market value. Things such as personal property, which is like business personal property, also registered motor vehicles, and our utilities and railroads, things like that are called public service. All of those properties are valued every year at 100% of fair market value. That's why your car values change every year, things like that. Real estate is only appraised once every four years in Forsyth County when we do a reappraisal. And so property tax is also about fairness. It's an ad valorem tax, which means according to value. So when we are at our best, we are making sure that no matter what property you own, you are paying your fair share of the taxes needed to support a jurisdiction and their needs. So if you think about someone buying a $100,000 Corvette, we're going to be taxing that Corvette at $100,000. But if someone bought a piece of real estate in 2024 for $100,000, the last time we appraised that property was in 2021, our previous reappraisal, and we may have had a value on the books at that time of about $65,000. So you can see that that's unfair. And so as the real estate market changes over time, and as we get further away from the reappraisal, then there becomes an imbalance in the property tax system. And so the whole purpose of a reappraisal is to simply bring all four types of property that we tax into 100% of fair market value, so that everybody's paying their fair share every time we have a reappraisal. That's the sole purpose of what a reappraisal is. And so another way of looking at that is I have a graphic here that just shows that the four different property types in 2024, you can see that real estate would have been paying less than what the market value was at that time. The whole goal of the reappraisal is to bring real estate up to 100% of fair market value, so that all property types are paying their fair share. You can imagine that we have to follow many state statutes in doing a reappraisal. One of the most basic ones is just informing us that we have to appraise all property at fair market value, and it goes on to explain in that definition that that's essentially what a willing buyer and seller would exchange money and property for. So we do use real estate sales as our guiding understanding of what the real estate market is. Buyers and sellers create the real estate market. We just kind of come along and figure out what people did do and make sure that we can appraise all property accordingly. Across Forsyth County, there are 165,000 properties in Forsyth County. There's about 98,000 real estate properties in Winston-Salem. In Forsyth County, over the last four years, there's been 30,600 sales that we would use in our database to help us understand that local real estate market. And if you look at sales that only occurred during 2024, you see that there's still plenty of sales for us to understand what the local market is doing. Our objective in our values is to provide each property owner with a fair and accurate tax assessment at 100% of fair market value. And to remind you again, and those watching, that appraisers follow the real estate markets. It's our job to follow it wherever that goes. We also have to meet statistical standards in our work product, and I'll have more about that in just a second. In order to understand how the market has changed, we look at something called a sales ratio, and it's simply just comparing our tax value on our books divided by a sale price. So if you can imagine a property that we appraised in 2021 at $100,000, it may have sold just last year for $155,000. That individual sale creates a sales ratio, and that particular math works out to be 65%. So I can tell you the assessment level of a property, but we also can take any grouping of properties and look at that group and understand what the overall assessment level is by a group of properties. We always use medians instead of means, as medians are not influenced by outlier bias. As you look at sales ratios, if they are below 100%, that means that your market has moved up, has increased. So the lower the number, the more that the market's actually increased. So we mentioned that we follow the real estate market, and certainly, it goes without saying that the real estate market changes differently for different types of property. So I have some ratios that were run. These are inside the city of Winston-Salem, so this is not Forsyth County. This is just unique to Winston-Salem, that if you were to look at sales that occurred in the 2024 calendar year, for all residential properties, those are the ones that have buildings on them and those that are vacant land. Our assessment level, the typical assessment level, was 63%. You can see that land did well, but not as well as the improved properties, and they're only at 78%. I have different classifications based on sale prices, and you can see how the market, again, has moved differently for different property types. You see that the segment that I have on this screen that did the best was that 150,000 to 249,000 sale price at 60% assessment level. What that means, you may think that's only 40% lower than 100, but actually, to get those properties up to 100% of fair market value, their value would have to go up 66% to get them back to 100% assessment. You see that condominiums have done real well as well, and commercial are the last three items, and they've not done as well as residential properties, but still, that is very strong growth for commercial properties, certainly in four years. Everything that we've seen over the last four years is phenomenal real estate growth. Most of the growth occurred in 2021 and 2022. There was continued growth in '23 and '24, just not at the same pace as in '21 and '22. So this is where we are with our 2021 values in the '24 tax year. This is our assessment levels. Our job as assessors is to get everybody to 100% of fair market value or as close as we can. And so on the next slide, I'll show you where we are. So again, this is inside the city of Winston-Salem, so you can see that most all of my assessment levels are now at 100%, are very, very close. I guess most are at 99%. We have one slightly above and one a little bit lower than that. But what this is saying is that we have adjusted our values to bring them into alignment with the current real estate market. Regardless of how much we had to move those values, we've arrived at where we needed to arrive. I mentioned earlier that we have to meet statistical standards, so assessment level is just one of the items that we have to meet. Technically, the standard is to be within either between 90 or 110% fair market value. That is the standard. Our goal as an office is plus or minus 2% typically. Two other measures that we have to also meet, one is called coefficient of dispersion, and it's really a measure of goodness of fit. And so it's helping to make sure that beyond the assessment level, that we also, if we did miss the target, we missed very closely or very small. We did not have a wide margin of miss. The third one, called price-related differential, helps us to make sure that we are equitable. It's really an equity standard, to make sure that our values are not present with progressiveness or regressiveness. So if we meet those standards, then that means that we're not those things. And so we do meet standards across these three measures. We do divide the county up into about 1,500 smaller geographic areas called market areas, and so we meet these statistics in those market areas. We also meet it, I'm giving you very broad information tonight, and so we also meet statistics that way as well. Matter of fact, on the last slide, it talks about up there on the second line, the assessment level overall is at 100%. The coefficient of dispersion is right at 10%, and the PRD is at 102. All of those are well within range. But we're doing these statistics on each market area and each subgroup. One way to talk about how things have changed is to compare values from the 2021 reappraisal era to the 2025 reappraisal era. And so we did make a little bit of a map for you that just shows Winston-Salem. Now, this particular map is a heat map, and heat maps are helpful, but they're not always perfect, and so they can exaggerate things that are extremely high or extremely low. And so I just point that out as you look at this slide. If you notice the percent change, those are the same sets of values, or excuse me, same colors that we've used in reappraisals. Those are not the same values. Typically, our highest level would be at a 50% increase or above, and you can see here that our highest is at 300% value increase and above. There are some decreases, but they are very few in scope and scale, and you see that my first category of increase is anywhere from a 1% all the way to 40% increase, and that increase, and that color is actually white. So white in this setting is a color. It's not a Noel character. So tremendous amount of change that has been experienced in the real estate market. When we reflect that in our valuations, you're going to see significant change in valuations. The very same data I've got on another slide that represents things a little differently. I mentioned that the county is broken down into smaller market areas. And so here, we're looking, that's what all those different shapes are, are individual market areas. And so that does give you, I think, probably a little better idea of kind of where the value changes have mostly occurred. And if you were to, I have some slides later on if you would like to see them, but of the whole county. And so what you're seeing on these two slides is very indicative of what you see across the rest of the county outside of Winston-Salem as well, but I thought you might like to see primarily Winston-Salem.
John, do you want to ask, take questions as you go through or you want to wait till you get finished?
Your pleasure. Yes.
When I look at these heat maps, are they saying that, in the white areas, that the values of the property have increased 1 to under 40% from what it was?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Which is a very wide category.
And some have increased 300%. That's the red.
That is correct.
Okay. That one seems a little extreme. The red and the orange, they're sort of extreme increases.
I understand.
How do we justify that?
All by property sales. So in 2021, an example could be a condominium that in 2021 was worth $70,000. And we know it was worth $70,000 because we had sales preceding that date that showed sales in that amount. Today, those same condominiums might be selling for $230,000, $250,000. So in that math, you can get to 300% very quickly.
How do you treat foreclosures, which aren't necessarily market changes, that just, you know, financial?
Right. Of the sales that we use in our database, county-wide is the 30,600 sales that I mentioned. We are only using something called qualified sales. And what that does is it takes away transaction success, foreclosures, auction sales, sales between related parties, et cetera. Those are not in our analysis.
But those properties will get a change in their tax bill?
They will, yes. At this point, we're just talking about value, so they'll get a change in their property value at this point.
Thank you.
Another way of looking at the amount of change, I broke this down by number of parcels and by the same percentages to give you an idea of the parcel count or the percent of parcels inside of Winston-Salem. The, one thing to note here is that we are appraising all the properties, and so these numbers I'm comparing are not taken into account non-taxable or partial non-taxable. So this may not be what someone actually pays tax on, such as a senior citizen or something who's getting a discount. I'm looking at that original number that we appraised at full market value, that change from '21 to '25. But you can see that 61,000 properties in Winston-Salem will go up, you know, anywhere from 40 to 100% in four years. Again, our job is to reflect what the market has done. So it's not us creating the market, it's us following the market of what buyers and sellers have done in transactions over the last several years. There are a limited number of properties that will get a value pending notice. And so they'll open their value, open their notice up, and it's going to say value incomplete. It's not going to have a value on it. There are probably in the city of Winston, about 3,000 properties that we need to still do some work on, where we were finishing up the reappraisal, we weren't able to do as much work following the building permits, for example, and things like that. So that's mostly what it is, is building permit information that we've not gotten to yet. If someone receives a value pending notice, we will follow that up with a value notice that gives them their value and has their way to appeal if they'd like to. Another thing that you might think's a little unusual is that we also send value notices to fully exempted properties. Certainly, a lot of the properties that the county or city may own may very well be non-taxable forever and ever. But there are still other properties that are non-taxable today that may find themselves taxable at some point during the year. So this is our opportunity to let them know what that value is at this point. So if you're fully non-taxable or taxable, if you believe your value is incorrect, we are encouraging you to appeal to make sure we get that straightened out regardless if it's taxable or non-taxable. Also--
Question, Mr. Burns. For instance, government property, exempt property, such as the courthouse, even though it's the county, you're going to evaluate that because in a year, some developer could come along and want to buy it, and it's no longer government property, that's basically, so that they will have an estimate of what this property is valued at?
That's right.
Okay.
That's especially helpful for entities such as churches that may have some property they're trying to sell, that may currently be non-taxable today, or entities that are very complex, like Wake Forest has a lot of properties that do a lot of different things, and they may change those uses. And so some of their properties may become non-taxable. So it's our way of making sure that we're letting them know that we have this amount of money on the books, whether or not you're taxed or not. In case you go taxable, then you have an idea of what that is.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
You mentioned you had, you broke the county into 1,500 little, why 1,500 and not 500 or 2,000? What was the criteria?
Good question, thank you. We're trying to make sure that those groupings are of similar type properties. So in some cases, it may even be just a neighborhood, the way it was platted. Our market areas will range anywhere from about seven parcels up to more than 1,000. So as you get outside of the city, they're more rural, they may cover an area that is, you know, like a mile wide or something like that. As you're in closer to more density of development in the city, it may be just like 150, you know, residential lots or something like that. But we're trying to find the most similar properties to each other, and we group those together. It might, like a condominium complex, would be, might be right beside a typical detached single family that's 40 years older. We're not going to put those in the same market area to appraise them similarly.
Okay. Thank you.
There are a lot of folks that do receive some sort of tax relief, and so their reappraisal notice is not going to say what that tax relief is. The reappraisal notice is simply going to tell them what the appraised value of their property is. When they get their bill in July, that's where that deduction is taken, and so they'll see that. If someone is in the program, and as long as they still qualify, they're not coming out of the program. So in case you have constituents call and wonder about that, they're welcome to call us, and we can confirm they're still in the program, but just wanted to let you know because they certainly may have questions.
Got a question, John. And that program is, are all senior citizens eligible for a discount? Or is it income?
There's several criteria. The most basic, one of, program of the tax relief programs is called senior citizen or totally and permanently disabled. If you own your own home, 65 years of age or older, have an income under $37,900, and if you apply with us by June 1st, have to do that. And if all that works, what the benefit is, is either $25,000 of value off of your value or up to half of the value of your property, whichever is greatest. So for most folks, that would be half. And so that's a significant savings, obviously. There are some other programs for disabled, well, service-related disabled veterans that are different, and there's something called a circuit breaker that's different as well, that involves a deferral. So, but the most popular one's the first one that I discussed. So on your retreat, I'm sure you were talking about all things budget and otherwise. And so for those watching, just as a reminder that as a part of your budget document, each reappraisal, there is something that's required called the revenue-neutral tax rate to be identified, doesn't have to be adopted. So just wanted to mention that as a part of the process to help make the tax rate-setting process as transparent as it can be for the public, and I have a definition there at the bottom as to what that represents, but just wanted to mention that as you're heading toward those discussions and figuring out budgets. The 2025 reappraisal notices, we mailed those out on February 1st. I'm aware, I believe the city actually got their box today, I heard. So certainly today or over the next couple of days, everyone should be receiving theirs by mail. If you had signed up for our electronic notices, those went out as early as 11 o'clock today. If you believe that the value is correct and reasonable, then that's great. That's exactly what we're supposed to do, is to issue an accurate and fair value. If you believe that it is inaccurate or unfair, then we ask you to please appeal. Anytime that you typically employ two appraisers to appraise the same property, if they're within about 10% of each other, that's usually kind of a rule of thumb that the values or the estimates are reasonable. And so we kind of use that here and say, if we're within 10% of what you think, plus or minus, then we're probably all good. If we're outside of that, then we would absolutely encourage you to appeal, and we'll be happy to take a look at that. Inside of the reappraisal notice, it's going to give you your value, a little bit of information about your property, and it's going to describe the reappraisal process. Right behind that will be an informal appeal form, and that's if you want to appeal, it's right there. It's everything except for your signature and your reason as to why we should consider your appeal. And those appeals come back to our office. That's what an informal appeal does, it comes back to our office for our staff to work. You have 30 days to complete those and get those back to us. You also have the option to appeal formally, and that's to the Board of Equalization Review. They're independent of our office, they're appointed by the county commissioners, five-member board, and you appeal to them, and we'll work those, and if we can come to some agreement, we'll pass that information along to the board. Otherwise, you can come speak your piece to the board, and we will do the same, and the board makes the decision in front of everybody. The deadline for formal appeals is the last business day in June. Because of the amount of value change is so significant and so historic, the county commissioners thought that it would be beneficial to include a property record card inside that reappraisal notice for all residential properties. So that was something the county commissioners wanted to do, and we are doing. And so you will see a property record card there. All property record cards are also available online, but we wanted to make sure that you had those right in front of you. We certainly welcome all and any appeals and any and all questions. I do have something that I think you're, I believe everybody will enjoy, but I believe your staff will too. We have a new application called Tax Property Portal. It just went live a few days ago. So if you go to the Tax Administration webpage, you'll see an icon that looks like what I have a picture of there, the government building. And it will show you maps and your appraisal data. It is very similar to Tax Parcel Viewer, which we still have, and so that still exists. Tax Property Portal has a stronger search engine, and so it's not as particular as you're trying to search for something. It's easier to use and navigate, I believe. The bigger thing is that it works extremely well with mobile devices. So Tax Parcel Viewer had some struggles in that area in the past. And so Tax Property Portal does very well on your cell phone and things like that. So I wanted to mention that to you. It's also a way that you can navigate to your bill, it's a way to navigate to an appeal form, a formal appeal form, if you'd like to do that. Another application we have is called Forsyth Sales, and that helps you see sales that have gone on around to help you understand kind of what we were seeing, so you can understand why your value changed the way that it did. As always, we welcome people to come visit us in person or call us on the phone. In person, we're located 201 North Chestnut Street at the Government Center, and we'll have staff ready and able to assist people, we help fill out appeal forms or whatever we have to do, or applications for exemptions. I've got staff lined up there all through the month, February for that, and if you'd like to see me at the front counter, I'll be there tomorrow. So it's my day to work there. So certainly welcome any way that we can assist you or our public.
Thank you, John. That was very clear in helping us understand the process. Any questions that councilrooms might have? Councilman Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Johns. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a quick question of clarity. So you talked about the different brackets or groups that would be eligible for tax relief, and you talked about folks who are disabled. Is that anyone who is disabled in a separate tier than the service-related disabled veterans?
That is. Thank you for that clarification. It is.
Okay.
And there's also not an income requirement there on the total, it's 100% permanent disability, but it is not an income requirement on that element.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate your great work there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item G2, please.
Item G2, resolution approving the code of conduct for the Winston-Salem City Council.
Mr. Mayor, would you give us a little highlight on this one?
Yeah, just briefly, we've, councils reviewed this on several occasions. This is, again, came out of a variety of discussions we've been having, most recently at the strategic planning work sessions that we had this week. This is just an opportunity for council to put in, down on paper, the beliefs you have about how you want to conduct your business with each other and with the community.
Questions, Mr. Page? Entertaining motion. Oh, well, Councilman Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some comments regarding the code of conduct. First of all--
Could we get a motion on the floor, then get the comments? Would someone make a motion?
For approval.
Motion by Mayor Tim, second by Councilwoman Clark, and now Councilwoman Burke, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, a legal framework already exists. According to North Carolina Constitution, Article 6, Section 7, all North Carolina elected officials are required to take the mandatory oath of office. We all did. It's a prerequisite before assuming our duties on council. It is legally binding, and it is enforceable under GS 160A-60. And violations have consequences, they have legal consequences. Additionally, all North Carolina elected officials are required to complete a state code of ethics training. This is a state-established policy, and this training covers many key areas such as conflicts of interest, gift restrictions, use of public office, transparency requirements, accountability measures, ethical decision-making frameworks. There, for me, are issues with the proposed code of conduct. Number one, and I have a list, it was not requested by this council. It was not created by this council. It's not legally binding, it's not legally enforceable, it's redundant, it actually duplicates the existing requirements that I just named. And it also creates many procedural concerns. And it also creates many procedural concerns, as it is. It creates the potential for confusion with existing legal requirements. It may complicate enforcement of established ethic, ethic rules, and it introduces redundant oversight mechanisms. It also creates implementation issues. For example, the October 2024 incident demonstrates challenges in behavior interpretation. The October 2024 incident, a former council member engaged in behavior explicitly prohibited by Section 5 of the proposed code of conduct. And I'm going to read it in part. It says, "Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the governing body, city staff, or the public. This council member requested the use of the city's legal defense fund, and unilateral approval was granted for this request. No council vote occurred. This request bypassed council oversight. There was no deliberative process. This creates in policy inconsistencies by protecting and funding defense of exactly the behavior that this code prohibits, by using public resources to defend conduct that violates the proposed code of ethics standards, also by creating and setting a precedent that undermines the proposed code's purpose." And before I conclude, I want to say that when I read number five of the proposed code of conduct, I personally found it very disrespectful and insulting to me. So I'm going to conclude by saying the, again, proposed code of conduct is redundant. The existing constitutional and statutory requirements already provide enforceable standards. The mandatory state ethics training ensures comprehensive coverage. The historical precedent shows framework, frameworks sufficiency. And this may create inconsistent standards alongside state requirements. The implementation also challenges the, of the proposed code could create more problems than solutions. Adding another layer of unenforceable rules could be counterproductive to what, to counterproductive when existing state requirements are clearer and they actually have legal standing. The October incident shows that local interpretation and enforcement can be inconsistent and potentially unfair. Relying on the established state requirements would better serve the council and the public interest. Mayor, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for his comments. Councilmember Clark?
Just a few brief comments. I have taken the oath of office, and I have taken the ethics training as required. The oath of office primarily says you will uphold the North Carolina Constitution, not inconsistent with the U.S. Constitution, fairly broad. The ethics video you watch really has to do with the fact that you can't accept gifts and things of that sort. Matter of fact, I can't even accept a cup of coffee if you were to offer it to me unless everyone in the room was offered a cup of coffee, so to speak. What this has to do with, and I did, before this was done, talk with both the mayor and the city manager, I just think the world has become very impolite. And it happens in Washington, and it happens in Raleigh, and it happens here. I think here it happens primarily during the public comment period, when I think some fairly aggressive, inappropriate language is directed at certain council members. I don't know if this is enforceable or not, but I'm going to sign it, because I think it's important for me personally to set a standard that I will treat everyone courteously. And if I disagree with you, I will disagree professionally. And again, I don't know if this is enforceable, but I think it's just kind of signing the book saying I'm going to try to maintain a high standard. The last comment I would make concerning the October incident, that question was addressed to the city attorney's office, and of course, this was not in effect at the time, because it's not in effect until tonight, if we pass it. And it was the city attorney's opinion that the incident that took place qualified for the city to offer a defense to the person. And I'm not going to speak for the city attorney. Our current city attorney is out tonight. Matter of fact, our previous city attorney happens to be sitting in the audience, but she's a civilian now, but I'm not going to call on her. But I'm supporting this because I want to be sure I hold myself to a high standard. And that standard is you treat everybody with respect and dignity, even if I don't like you, even if I disagree with you. Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion to approve the proposed code of conduct, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I see two noes. Motion passes and vote to six to two. Councilmember Burke and Councilmember Taylor voting in a negative. Thank you very much. All right. Item G3?
Item G3, consideration of items related to North Carolina Major Events, Games, and Attractions Fund.
Mr. Scott Raul?
Good evening again, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protemore Adams, members of council. This is a last-minute addition to your agenda this evening. In 2023, the North Carolina General Assembly established the Major Events, Games, and Attractions Fund as part of the sports banning legislation to enhance the state's ability to attract and retain large-scale events that boost tourism and drive economic development. And the Department of Commerce administers the grant. Back in the fall, the city was a co-applicant with NASCAR on applying for funding from this program to support the clash. Fast forward to late last week, we did receive notice from the Department of Commerce that a grant was going to be awarded for the clash, that it was going to be an amount that would cover 80% of the qualifying expenses for the event, up to $2 million. So they wanted us to move quickly to get the grant agreement executed so that they can then move quickly with dispersing the funds. And so that's why this item's coming to you so quickly. In terms of kind of the mechanics of the grant, there is no local match required of the city. It is a three-party agreement between the State Department of Commerce, us, and NASCAR Event Management LLC or its affiliates. Our responsibilities under the grant are basically to make sure that NASCAR, what's considered in the agreement, the site selection organization, did follow through with the event, which we know they did, and that we provide proper reporting back to the Department of Commerce in terms of how, of the, of the qualifying expenses, and that we verify that those are qualifying expenses, essentially that the expenses were incurred in the state. So compensation would be one example of employees or workers there. Also, goods that are purchased by businesses located in the state, or services provided in the state, all focused on economic, I think, basically economic activity that occurred in the state as a result of this event. So there's two parts to the, to the item this evening. One is a resolution authorizing the city, well, basically ratifying. We're, we're, we're trying to get, to get the, the agreement executed as quickly as possible. But so basically ratifying the execution of the agreement with, with the state and with the NASCAR entity. And then secondly, a budget amendment that would appropriate the potential maximum amount that could be dispersed of $2 million, so that once the Department of Commerce basically certifies that the expenses were qualifying, then we can receive the funds and then turn around and disperse, and then just pass through those funds to this NASCAR entity. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Raul? Councilmember CPO, NASCAR fan?
Yes. Mr. Raul, money always looks good when it comes to us, and we get it. Is this a one-time application just for this event, or will it be, we be able to apply for next year if we're going to have the clash?
So this is a one-time application specifically for the clash. I'm assuming that, that there would be an effort to pursue similar funding, because this, this is intended to attract, like I said, large-scale events, whether it's the clash, Super Bowl, PGA, the PGA Tour event, you know, a huge event like that.
So does it cover any of our expenses that we incurred, or is it just expenses that NASCAR incurred?
Most likely, the focus is going to be on expenses that the NASCAR entity incurred. It states also in the agreement that a lot of it's on pre-production and post-production expenses, but mainly, you know, like I said, the examples I gave of compensation and purchase of goods, services provided, that all happened within the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raul. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Mayor Protemore Adams. Discussion. Not all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. Thank you. We have all the items on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion to adjourn by Mayor Protemore, seconded by several councilmembers, Hall and Joyner. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned.